Time is now 6:30. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Before we get started, Councilman Adams will lead us in prayer. And then after that, I'd ask you all please stand for the pledge.
Lord, we've come to you tonight and thank you for your grace to begin with. We ask that you go with us through this meeting. Give us the wisdom and words that we need to do what we do for the people of this city. Thanking you for the attendees tonight. Asking you to go with them as they proceed home after the meeting and give them safe travel, Lord. We've got a lot of issues going on in the world today, Lord. We ask that you be with all the people that are hurting. Give them a mind to see that there is a way out of all this. Only if they turn to you, Lord Jesus. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is our first time having an open meeting where we can actually allow the citizens to come in. And I want to thank you all for showing up tonight and staying abreast with what's going on in our community. When we get ready to get started here, we're going to go ahead and go into our executive session, which is first on our agenda. So we're going to go ahead and move to executive session right at this time. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code, the city council will recess in an executive session to discuss the following: personnel matters, to discuss the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee. This executive session concerns our municipal judge. At this time, we will now go into executive session.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This is our first time having an open meeting where we can actually allow the citizens to come in. And I want to thank you all for showing up tonight and staying abreast with what's going on in our community. When we get ready to get started here, we're going to go ahead and go into our executive session, which is first on our agenda. So we're going to go ahead and move to executive session right at this time. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City Council will recess in an executive session to discuss the following: personnel matters, to discuss the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer or employee. This executive session concerns our municipal judge. At this time, we will now go into executive session.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
No, according to government code, chapter 551, the city council will reconvene into regular session. At this time, I'm going to open for, because this was an action item, I will open up the floor for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint as a new municipal judge. Will be Kay McNutt.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Tim Dale, second by Mr. Galen Adams. Madam Secretary, could you please record a vote?
Councilor Chappelle.
Spruill.
Aye.
Dale.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Adams.
Aye.
This motion carries unanimously. We'll not close that. I want our item two in our regular.
Mayor. We'll let Carrie.
Carrie.
Minister.
Oh, we're going to do it before we do this.
Congratulations, Ms. McNutt. We're excited to have you on. If you would come forward, please, we'll do a swearing in ceremony here with Mr. Wood. He'd like to. He just did it.
Okay, yeah. Ms. Kay?
Your honor. I'm, I'm, she's come forward that, she's replacing Jerry West and is retiring October 1 as a municipal judge.
Thank you all very much.
Stand up next to that microphone right there.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, yeah, it's a, it's a little marker there.
There you go. On the marker.
Yeah.
There's my spot.
You would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I know you're no stranger to this oath.
Several times.
In a different context, if you would, place your name.
Okay.
Aimed by the authority of the state of Texas, I.
Aye, Kay McNutt.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
The office of municipal judge.
Of the office of municipal judge.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant, Texas.
Of the city of Mount Pleasant, Texas. And of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And of the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ms. Kate, would you honor? Center around the flag.
You want to, you want, yeah, you want, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and, uh, going to move on since we've kind of incorporated our two appointment. And we're going to go into item three of our regular agenda. This is to consider approval of minutes of the September 1st, 2020 regular session.
After review, a move that we approve the minutes is written for September 1st, 2020 regular.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Galen Adams, second by Mr. Henry Chappelle. Madam Secretary, record the vote, please.
Councilor Adams.
Aye.
Walker.
Aye.
Dale.
Aye.
Spruill.
Aye.
Chappelle.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now close item three, and we'll now move on to item four, which is our August financials. Ms. Reeves.
Thank you, counsel. You have before you the financials for August 31st. We're looking very well with our financials. We are 91.63, 6% through the budget year. We have spent approximately, um, around now. I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. Um, we, we should have, we were approximately 91.6% year with remaining to be spent 8.4%. And we are currently around 8%, so we are a little bit, um, under, under budget for that. Overall, with our revenue collections, um, we should be again around 8.4% remaining to be collected. And we have 6.6% to be collected, so we are over in our collection, so we're doing very well on that. Sales tax, um, is 8.0% above estimated budget for the year we did, which is about $226,000 above. We, um, estimated at the beginning of the year. We did bring some of that revenue into the budget, um, when we did our budget amendment in March. And we're still on target with that budget amendment that we brought in. Property taxes around 97.16% of collections. We typically bring in around 98% collections on property tax, so we're still on target with where we are, um, with our property taxes. And fees is still trending, um, around 39% above over last year. We did take, um, account that in our amended budget, but we're still, um, trending down. Expenses are down about 46% over budget, um, and about 22% from prior year. So that's also offsetting, um, some of that revenue, um, that's trending down as well. Overall, water sales on the water and sewer side, um, is still down a little bit, um, about 9.63. Again, that still drew to the rainfall and just lower water usage. Sanitation is trending up about 5% and sewer sales are trending up about 4.5%. So, um, overall, uh, utility revenue, um, is around 91% of our collected. We should be around 91.6%. So we are trending just a little bit down on the water side, but again, that's mostly due to water sales, which is, um, the majority of our, with about 60% of our water revenue on the water side. Expenses, um, are about 16% remaining in that budget, and they should be about 8.4%. Our expenses are down as well on the utility fund side, so we're doing very well to cover the decrease in the water. I'll take any other questions y'all may have.
Can you give us an update on the audit that we approved for the hotel motel tax? How's that coming?
So, um, they sent the letters out to the hotels. They've reached out to them, requested some information. They're trying to do a great deal of that audit in-house. So, um, they are planning one site visit to each hotel, um, to talk to them. I got, um, some information from them today, actually, with the letters, scheduling their site visits to each hotel. So they're, they're coming. Coming up on what they found just yet, because they're doing still, um, a lot of the preliminary stuff. Um, and they are scheduling their site visits here within the next month.
Okay.
Might, might point out, she meant, went, mentioned it, but I wanted to kind of point out that sales tax, uh, is 3% over budget. It's coming in so far 43%. We budgeted 40%. We've gone through and the shutdown of everything, that's really.
Pretty grim.
That's good. A lot of cities have taken a real hit in their sales tax revenue and have lost revenue. And this city didn't, and it's, I say it's, uh, to do with our mayor and our county judge, who worked hard and, and with y'all, uh, who worked hard not to just shut everything down completely, but to work through the COVID. Hopefully, we're, uh, maybe speaking too soon, knock on wood. Hopefully, we're not, we're through the hard part of it. Things are leveling up and we just have just a few cases a day instead of like 50 a day. They're going to, so we're slowing down. Anyway, I thought that was interesting. We came through the COVID better than most cities have.
We have further questions?
Thank you, McHale.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and, uh, close item four. We'll move on now to item five, and that's an update on the new sports complex by Symmetry Turf Sports Construction.
Good, and counsel, I'll let you have right here, just say.
Lanny Buckle, KSI, just wanted to introduce Eric Law. Uh, Eric's going to give us an update on what's, what's been going on out there and, and hopefully able to answer a lot of your questions. And if not, I'll try to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Lanny.
Eric.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Eric Law, Symmetry Sports Construction. Are finally, uh, getting to the end of this project, so, uh, I know everyone is, uh, towards getting to use the, the complex. So, uh, we are wrapping up, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be wrapping up the remainder of the land. Um, that's the biggest, biggest item that, uh, F, uh, got some signage that's going in. The disc golf, uh, course is being installed, so we're getting, we're getting, um, I think there's quite a few questions you have, or several anyway.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just ask, does everybody here understand that we had a disc golf part of the project?
I, I didn't know that.
I didn't know it either until, until they were saying it.
That's great. That's great.
Well, well, I guess my first question would be, is, uh, uh, the lighting and Lanny, you may be able to speak on the, that we were talking about near that playground. An update is for us where we are on that.
So. So with respect to the lighting on the playground, um, Symmetry has asked that, that that be taken out of, or not be included in their contract. So we're going out for, uh, other consultants to give us pricing on that to get that installed. So we're, uh, we're just, those bids right now.
Okay.
Thank you. The um railing and stuff, have you, have they already put the railing around this stage area?
The railing is currently, the railing is currently being powder coated right now. So it's it's been framed up and uh it's uh it should be back later this week and be uh installed permanently.
Okay. Are we are we still have issues with the uh uh washing on the fields in rain over the streets in there previously having trouble?
We've got all those, we've got all those areas sod it now. So that has drastically reduced any any runoff we're getting any as far as sediment goes.
Okay. Okay. What about the fields? I mean, of course, you get all kind of, so y'all are there every day, you know? Uh, when the hard rain hits, are we having any erosion on the fields at all or not?
No.
Okay.
There there's no infection or?
We're still, we're still working at small low areas, but uh nothing that, there's no erosion at this point.
Okay.
On the entrance going in, uh what are our plans on that? What are we looking at doing as far as grooming up, cleaning up? Uh, any type of fencing there at the front on both entrances?
Yes, I don't know the last thing you've been out, but the uh there's uh pipe fencing up at both entrances. The posters set. Um, there's a little bit of clearing that's gotta be done to remove those. Especially on two seventy one, there's old chain link and stuff
Right, right.
Covered in vines.
Taking that down and all.
Yes, that that'll all be gone. Uh, there wasn't a whole lot of vegetation on thirteen fourteen, but there there will be uh black pipe fencing uh at both entrances.
Interesting extent on each side.
Uh, on two seventy one, it extends about almost ninety feet on each side of the gate. I think it's about eighty feet off of thirteen fourteen.
How's the paving going? Is it pretty much?
We're uh pretty much complete. We got a few touch up areas, but uh for the most majority, it's done. All of a sudden, we just got a few areas touch up.
On the wash areas there where we've got the wrap around the creek coming in on the right there. And then when you come on around going out. Uh, you think that suffice for, are we seeing much wash or erosion around that? I know several weeks ago we we were.
There was a, there's a little bit because there's vegetation right there. So uh that's all being hydro mulched right now. So that should, that should eliminate
Okay.
Majority of that.
I have a question. The golf course is something new. Where is it located?
Um, the big parking lot south side of the soccer fields. If you go out that east end, that it's it's kind of a grown up area, but it's been uh the, I hate to call them fairways. I don't know what the correct terminology for uh a disc golf, but uh the pathways in between the tee box and the baskets are all being and uh
How large?
The uh
Is there nine nine positions?
Nine, there's nine baskets and they're anywhere from two hundred and fifty feet to three hundred and fifty feet
Okay.
length. Each one.
Okay.
You don't have any trees? Is there water? Is it gonna be water at the um entrances where the signs are for gaping?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and it those are both the signs at thirteen fourteen and two seventy one will be.
Will that be solid or will that be hydro mulched?
Um, there's some, there's some hydro mulch. There's also landscape beds around those signs that are
I just think these entrances are real important. You know, I've always been a guy from my past business, you know, the first you never get a second chance to make a first impression. So when you come into, when you drive by or coming into it, you know, if that looks nice coming in, uh maybe the, I'm 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 sure we just hadn't got to that part yet. But uh clearing some of the little underbrush, just tree tree trimming, just uh, you know, just the the kind of shaping it up there at the at the end.
It will uh, the entrances, both entrances will be very, they'll be clear of all that overgrown brush and old fences and all that. So.
Comments about that. Of course, people, as they drive by now, they, you know, what what we we know what they see. And they're like, no, that's not the way it's gonna be. But I think with with the signage, we're gonna get to that in a little bit here on the signage.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's gonna be real important on on our signage, what we do with the decisions we make.
Yeah, what is Eric, what's the current status on the render we have here for this sign?
Um, that's, that's what's being installed at both entrances.
Right. So a couple of concerns about this here in this rendering and this drawing, it says it's a single sided sign. So there's a high highly traffic, you know, traveled road that are main entrance into the complex. Uh, one of the concerns we have is if that's single sided, depending on which way, if you're traveling north or south, somebody's gonna miss seeing the the entrance. We were thinking about with this same layout gear, putting it on either side at an angle of the entrance. So no matter which direction you're coming, the entrance to that facility.
I think the plan so far was to put it parallel with two seventy one, kind of like our entry signs on it coming in.
But that's so hard to see when you're going sixty five miles an hour coming in there. It's the off the pipe fence that he's talking about at an angle. So that way, when you're coming in north or south, you can see it easily versus it being
If you're coming sixty miles an hour, you should keep your eyes.
Oh, that too. No, but there's some concerns there. You know, we're we're investing eight million dollars in this. We don't want to skimp out on the entrance.
Okay, that's something I'd draw over the design, uh MHS planning and the other ones that are designing all this. So um
So Henry, are you thinking uh perpendicular, you can see it on both sides, sticking up along this one?
Except. Yeah.
He won on each side.
Oh, oh.
My my, my concern with it, I mean, once again, y'all aren't responsible for that. I'm just kind of having a conversation here. But the material we're talking about, I mean, um, you know, we're talking about wood and 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 post and that's all, that all, that's all fine and good for about four, five, six years. But I mean, we've got a facility out here that a huge employer here that has ability to to see a metal sign and powder coat and all of this. And I just feel like the amount of money that we've spent on the park, the need to provide in the entrance is is of it, even if we have to go above what we've already committed. Once again, this on the playground and we could do it ourselves if if that's what it requires to get what we want.
Well, maybe Lanny, you you should talk with William and he's the one that's responsible for the design of the sign.
That's composite. Well, just just real quick, just for the public here, you may not know where it's a four by twelve. This is a cedar wood sign panel with raised borders. Uh texture image bolted to a four by four cedar post.
Mr. Mr. Okay, interrupt you.
Well, this one says painted acrylic. So is it acrylic or is it wood?
It's composite.
Okay.
It's it's like
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
The whole sign is is composite. It's not wood.
Okay.
And the they won't, there will be a metal string between the columns that it mounts.
So it'll look like this loading between columns, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, I mean, at a minimum, I'm I'm not sure this still what we need to do there. And I don't know that. I mean, I agree.
We need to stop and look at it because I don't think that sign's large enough.
It's it's twelve feet wide.
Okay.
Just the sign itself.
How long?
Twelve feet wide by four.
So it's a sheet, sheet and a half of plywood, basically. Eight, yeah.
Yes. It's twelve feet, but then the the measure that you said there, there'll be another two and a half feet, I believe. So you're gonna have seventeen feet total of the signing width of it there. And it'll be lit as well as around it now.
Because backlit, frontlit, what are, what are we, is it backlit or frontlit or what are we, what are we doing? Frontlit?
You're talking about just light lighting, just shining up?
Yeah.
I I think that the concern of the council, it it appears is that we just need to to make sure before we go forward with this that that council has some input on it. And I think what Councilman Adams is saying here, and I agree with, and I think Councilman Chappell also, it would just go with something of this size that we uh, we could use those funds and maybe even if we have to put some more funds with it. But let's let's don't put this up and then have to come back and do a a bigger or better or whatever in a year or two. We'd rather do it right the the first time.
I think, I think I missed this, Lanny. What what I should have had happen when we talked about the sign and we put the money with it was get a couple of the council to meet with miners and look at a couple of them and get before we, so we probably need to do that.
So so what we can do, I mean, the issue will, um, the signs are being constructed right now. If we have to add another sign, you know, that's that's not a long lead time to do that if we want to put to it an angle. We're concerned with underground utilities on the north or anyone, if you will. I think gas, maybe Mount Pleasant's water, Tri's water. Um
You can't come out too far to the road because you can't put them on top of the line.
There's a, you know, drainage back there as well. So there's gonna be some considerations we need to take in there. But we're more than welcome if you guys want to come up with a couple of council members to meet to meet with you guys, investigate the the obstacles that are in the way and come up with a plan that makes you more comfortable.
Remind dollars that were that's allocated for this sign.
Twenty for each sign.
That's what I thought.
How much is the sign itself costing though? Do you, anybody know, not not the, not the post and the and the landscaping, but the sign itself? Does anybody, do you guys know or anybody know?
I would have to go back and look through the bid to get that individual sign cost somewhere six, between six and seven thousand dollars.
And part part of this cost to get side, we need another tout by the city, need to avoid all the utilities. I mean, it's it's
And you also have to turn it so
We gotta turn this one now. So we gotta miss utilities on this side. I mean, I, it's certainly something that can be investigated and I don't mind doing that.
Well, something else that a couple of other council members have discussed is when we went and did that tour on the interior on some of the path or walkways, William had talked about there being some like arches or to to name the path. Is that correct? Like some kind of metal support that goes up with a name above, the name in that path that you walk up? I forget exactly what he called those. You know what he
The gangways?
Yes.
The gangways, they're up.
Okay, so they're up. So what we talked about is again, on something of this nature, this size, carrying that same look to the entrances of the and same scale out by the entrance, going up high enough so you can still get bigger vehicles in there if you ever have to down the road. But to carry that same look from the from where you first come in so that's something that we wanted to discuss as well. Uh, because I guess apparent discussions that was not ever brought up.
So are you thinking a gateway over the entrance road itself?
Yes, right there where you come in like off two seventy one and off thirteen fourteen, you have a similar type gateway or archway, whatever you want to call it. That tail for that size width of the street and the height that you need to mirror exactly what's in the interior paths. Because that will finish and tie that all together, I'm telling you. And just give it a better look coming in with the signs and and the pipe fencing and everything that you've already got there will tie it all together.
Yeah, there it'll be additional funding, I'm sure.
It'll be additional funding, but I'm just saying
That's something that we'll have to
Back to Tim's point, we don't want to skimp on the on on this entrance. We're spending eight million dollars and we don't want people to come back and say, well, why did they not do? We spent eight million dollar facility and you skimped out on the entrance. You needed to all tie to get the flow.
Yeah, we can certainly look at, I mean, how how would you like us to bring these options back to you or is there some?
Well, however, we're doing like the lighting. If you're if you're if if uh include the lighting, then we do this the same way. We'll see what the additional dollars are.
Sure.
To make it right.
Yeah, we could do it any way you want to. I I don't, with respect to timing is what I'm thinking of right now.
I recommend you, we get a council members that's got time to meet with us, look at some options and and talk it through until they are
I agree with that, but I think it's something we need to discuss. We need to explore that, whether it's done before we sign off on the bill or it's something we come back shortly after uh sealing the deal on this, that we do not overlook that and get that done.
What are we looking at as a turnover right now uh for the estimated time of completion?
Uh, we have a punch list log scheduled for October first. So.
And that'll be with Mr. Buck.
That and the other consultants that design the project.
And that walkthrough will be to create the punch list?
That is correct.
And then you'll have, then you'll go to work and it'll get, yeah, yeah.
I forgot, it's been a while. After the how long are they responsible before they hand it over?
Well, uh, the walkthrough is substantially complete. Then they walk through and create the punch list. And that's just as fast as they get the things done, they're done, we're ready to accept it and they're ready to give it to us. They, I think they're ready to give it to us.
Ed, we have
Probably end by, by the end of October, by November first would be safe.
That's the goal.
So maybe on our, on our, trying to think, our first meeting in October, uh if you've got the punch list, you might briefly go over that with us on kind of what what you're seeing on that punch list, if you like, Lanny. Might be good, or even the, even the second meeting in October might be.
Yeah, it would probably be the second meeting in October, but but we can certainly provide that list.
That'll be good.
By the second meeting, a lot of the punch stuff will be punched out, will be done.
And you can show us what's been checked off that this was, I think it'd be good. Let's talk out with Mr. Long.
Yes. Ed, do you have a status on the mower?
Yes, I do. Ricky, you what?
Thursday.
Okay.
So about the fifteenth of October.
Conroy already
Mower and tractor.
Yeah, the tractor, they get the turf tires.
Sure about that. I was just told today.
It was holding it. So if you expect and they'll be on it.
Yeah.
And I'll be the first one to drive it.
With the cowboy hat?
Yeah, with my hat.
All right, counsel, do we have any further questions?
Mr. Law, do you happen to know if if Mr. Bell uh will ever have an opportunity to come and be with us anymore before this project is completed?
Uh, I can uh bring your request in.
I wish you request a couple of times. I'd like for, I I wish he'd come and see us. I I I'm, he's the owner of the company of free turfing and I thought on a project this big, I I was, I called him right after I was elected chair and he told me that anytime we wanted to sit here from him, I know in his mind, you're his representative, but I think the contract was done with him. And I think it'd be nice on a project like this to get another chance to uh hear from him.
Uh, we'll let him
Thank you kindly.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay, we'll go ahead now and uh close item five. We'll move on to item six, which is discussion on parking restrictions in residential areas.
Mayor and council had some requests by some of the council to look to have this done with you. You might want to set the timer for three minutes. No, I'm teasing.
Yeah.
So we thought, Robert, we researched what our what our ordinances are. And uh, and then we'll uh, we can discuss it. I can say that in in the cities I've been in, like Mount Pleasant would be down south by Houston and also Greenville, that this subject has come up. And um, it's very difficult of course, um citywide because a lot of people don't have paved driveways. They have um we we ask them to if we can, but a lot of people want or two spaces or maybe no driveway. So it's hard to stay off the grass if they have no driveway. Uh, but anyway, let me uh, I I don't want to start it. This is a tough one to do, but go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, I I talked to John Ankrum, the billion official. We talked about this a bit today and last week. Um, our code actually describes what the requirements are for residential parking and basically that you Our code actually describes what the requirements are for residential parking and basically that you have in the residential areas and you're supposed to have two parking spaces available. Those spaces generally can be a carport or the garage. If those don't exist, then you can utilize the driveway. At the driveway, if you think about the driveway, the driveway is for you generally getting into your garage. People don't have those garages, but the code is saying that they can can be, is in a manner that you don't have to move the vehicle one back or the other. So what they're really saying, it's not really written out as clearly as it needs to be, but what it's basically saying that you have to provide a driveway essentially connected to the street and or the app that connects your. It's in a garage and if it's not there, then you still have that driveway. That driveway is typically based on the, it's of the building. In this city, the, the set requirements of your twenty-five feet front setback, twenty-five feet rear setback. So you by default get generally a twenty-five foot driveway. The driveway generally is usually eighteen to twenty feet wide for two cars. And typically the parking, parking space is is nine feet in width. So that gives you a generally minimal, minimally, you're going to have eighteen foot driveway. Now that's for residential. It goes on in the code to talk about general requirements for parking. And I think what that is basically is talking about what is a parking, all-street parking facility. The reference to all the, the reference to the size of how you park it, the dimensional parts of this and how this is done. It mentions in that, that all all-street parking facilities pay graded drain in accordance with. I believe that's referring to commercial retail office where you do have structural parking facility that has to meet some engineering specifications for drainage and or maneuverability and, and the design. And it spelled out how you design ninety-degree, sixty-degree, forty-five-degree parking. That's not ever really done residential property. You don't address it that way. Again, what you're addressing is the fact that they have to have a driveway and that driveway can be, can accommodate parking if it needs to be that way. So the code doesn't really specify that you can't park on your grass essentially. As Mr. Thatcher said, I think other cities, I know I've been involved with, with this kind of ordinance and try to, to address that. It's pretty difficult. It's the enforcement part of it that's difficult, just to let you know. Because if you've got streets that are not adequate, that don't have curb and gutter or the other side of it that I've meant to, to the building official was the fact that either boats are portrayed sometimes are driveways and don't have any other parking to accommodate guests or even and them have a large family and they have, end up driving cars, they end up with instead of two cars, so they don't have those places to put them. It's always kind of a problem. You can address it with ordinances, but then you have to really consider, consider your enforcement ability. Enforcement ability is, is usually the problem. So there, again, there are other ways maybe to address it through restricting what can be parked in the front of the house and kind of open up those, try to open those driveways up for that. But information from the code, if you have any questions, I will answer.
We could, you know, you can have an ordinance that says you can't park on the grass. Then you have to define, find grass in the front yard or because of driveways. It's an opening curb and they drive up. Then the other thing that you could do is Robert just said is pass an ordinance that says your boats and your RVs and that you stored off premises or in the backyard or on a pad on the side of your house or whatever. And not in your driveway in the front of your house. Having dealt with both of those kinds of ordinances are very difficult to to enforce. Bring, we have to bring Gabby back at retirement to do that.
Go ahead.
And I, in a rural town such as Mount Pleasant, if you live, there's an HOA or such, such, such as keep it, but it's in a small, who are not able to purchase concrete and, and other asphalt, because they don't have fixed income. It becomes a social economic status problem. And some folks are not able to have concrete because they can't afford it. And some folks have to think about the bigger, just not a certain neighborhood and, and who's able to pay for it. There are individuals that have been there all their life. The folks are above the age of sixty-five and they're on social security and fixed income. You, you come in with these guidelines. You, you, you put a restriction on people who can't pay for it. There, who might have five cars in New York because they're, that live there. And they're not able to park any other place. And then, and it'll, folks that don't have as much money as others. Especially in a rural town such as Mount Pleasant. If you're in this, if you're in develop these type of guidelines. And, but in Mount Pleasant, Texas, when you come and you go in the, in the small neighborhoods area in town, you'll see folks that are parking and, and working class people that are not able to pull concrete or whatever asphalt right beside by the city that's necessary there.
And a lot of our streets are, are, our ordinance calls are for a thirty-one foot street back of curb to back of curb. And most of our streets are twenty-four, twenty to twenty-four. And some of them smaller or narrower. And so you almost can't park on them. And if you do, you can park on one side, but not on both sides.
But if you make those restrictions now and you go by folks that live because they can't park on, where do working class people park their cars? It's a subdivision where you have an HOA and you have these type of guidelines. But if you go and you make this an ordinance, there are individuals who work class people who've been here all their lives. And you put that restriction that they can't park on the grass, where do they park their car?
Well, a lot of, I'll add to that, Councilman Walker. A lot of the, the, the home was built forty, fifty, sixty years ago. A lot of them are small homes. They're, a lot of them have a single carport. And back years ago, we all know there was normally one automobile family. Now, there's, all the kids have cars. There's a house now and there's four or five cars. So they have to park somewhere. And they're, the homes are close together. I drove around today and, and a lot of the neighborhoods just look, and this is why people are you know, and not that, I had to remind myself of that, that, and there's still lots of, a lot of cars all around on the street, you know.
I think it's going to be, like I said, as personnel, we've been definitely only going to bad if we went forward with ordinance like that. Again, just like Councilman Walker said, there's several places that it's possible for that, you know, to have that concrete slab put there or whatever because of a it's going to be pretty, pretty hard to go forward.
There's no other place for them to park?
But then you've got some scenarios where I think we need to consider amending this ordinance and strengthening the language because you've got subdivisions in other nice neighborhoods who have plenty of paved driveway parking and they still park it on the grass. Whether it's a boat on a trailer, a cargo trailer, utility trailer, truck, Jeep, motorcycle, whatever it may be. And they're not utilizing the, the paid parking area they already have. So that's where this language would come in to benefit and you could enforce that because they have the paid parking. And it's in some of these nice neighborhoods that starting to see more, more of these individual homeowners start doing this and they're not parking their vehicles or their wheeled vehicles. And this language is to that. So I think we do need to review this, take a look at it and do to strengthen that language to, for those homeowners who do have the available space already. Where they're properly parking these vehicles.
And it's, it's something we look, we look at in the future, going forward with the new neighborhoods and.
Well, Kerry, Kerry had applied an ordinance to just the population.
That's going to be. That part's going to be tough, counsel, to single out and say this particular, you know, neighborhood, this particular whatever. Because everything, I echo everything they said, there's neighborhoods built, you know, to accommodate just one car and whatever. But it would be difficult to differentiate or discriminate and say this neighborhood, that neighborhood. Because they have to be, the ordinance pretty much have to be formally applied. It's a little different, Robert was talking. SF one or SF two or whatever. You know, a little small, but this, this is some of the parking. So that part would be as, as Tim said, maybe want to look forward. You know, on these kinds of things and think about it in, in the future. On that enforcement. This has been discussed before in years past. Both sides and in the enforcement aspect of it. You really have to think about when you start to enforce it, you know, going back. But, but this is just the issues kicked out. We've got tape, we can have, come up with something, but uniform enforcement of it could be an issue.
A lot of the newer subjects have, the own subdivisions have HOA and have a
For example, in my subdivision, we have restrictions. But homeowners who try to push those restrictions to the limit, so that's where we try to get the city to help back us up because they're trying to bend the rule as far as they can to see how far they can get away with it. And a lot of times, like when it comes to people who don't like taking care of their yards and their shrubs. So the city does a real good job of enforcing that already.
Yeah, it's difficult to, it's Kerry's. City makes it more maybe job of enforcing the deed restrictions, but if they're not, if they're not citywide, it becomes difficult for us to enforce it. Have to do it over here kind of thing. So we get into a problem.
We don't really have any say in the deed restriction. To, to the code, you'll see in their property code and local government, but some of that refers around Houston area where they don't have any. I'm sure it does, are in there some, but that really doesn't apply to us because we're not, we, we have.
I'm sorry, why does not, why does it not apply to us?
Because we have zoning and some of the areas traditionally didn't have zoning.
Oh, zoning, okay.
Well, can we, I've got a thought process here. Maybe Robert or John take a look at it. Contact some cities similar in size and see what they do and, and see up to them code wise and proceed forward from here. Maybe we'll report back to us and say, well, this is what particular cities are doing and maybe we can have a better idea of what.
Add that there's, if you drive in the city, there's still areas where people have vehicles that are broke down or a back, you know, not necessarily they're a non-working vehicle and they just sit there and they let, let weeds grow up around them. Thing to the city as well. E- even if they do have limited parking, I mean, there, we need to have something too about addressing vehicles that are just busting and, and you know, just.
Code enforcement, that's usually, a non-operable vehicle is usually code enforcement violation. That's usually, that's pretty common violation right there. It's not operating. Experience, because I've had it in cities I've lived in, is that there's a, there's also even on the street where I live. In that city, only you, you're only allowed, I believe, there are forty-eight hours without being told to move it. And I've had personal experience that where I took tickets on my car. Where somebody complained and, and the police came around and ticketed my car saying, well, a ticket, ticket, it was a warning. I needed to move the vehicle, even though it was in front of my own house. So some cities, there was ways of restricting. Things are a tough thing to do. It's really hard. But we'll look at some other cities.
I know our code enforcement has been very good and where vehicles, our vehicles have been left because they don't have tires or an engine are not running for a long period of time. Our code enforcement usually but if you know of any of that, let us know. We, we can get them out there. Sounds good.
Thank you.
I want something.
Go ahead.
What, what point, Robert, in your experience, and I certainly do appreciate your, the depth of your experience. When does some of these issues become liability issues such as being able to get fire trucks or emergencies? When streets are overly parked on and overcrowded, is there any liability on the city? If y'all, in your experience, have you had any issues where an emergency and emergency people couldn't get there because of over parking?
Yes.
And what kind of liability does the city have on something like that?
I have Kerry, but I don't think there's any liability on the city, but we've had to have.
Because we didn't enforce it. In other words.
The firemen have knocked on doors and say, move the stuff. We got to get up the road kind of thing. And that's happened lots. Because our, that's when our streets are so narrow, a twenty-four foot street, if you park on both sides, you can't get a fire truck. You can better get your car down the middle. And so, so it's always a problem. It's better to have them not on the streets. Your bill, thirty-one foot streets, so if you park, that's another thing. But as far as liability, I think the city's okay.
I don't think that's a, that's, that's a huge issue. We have in the past, we've because we've, we've handled some tickets in, in the court about the, just like Robert said, where they gave warnings and then tickets. It, it kind of runs in cycles, I'll admit, but we have, we have enforced that. Areas, the city were some complaints about parking on the street, access and things like that. So the police have, they have enforced that in the past, you know, about parking on the street.
Well, even though it's outdoors, we, we do have a lot of ordinance cities and buildings. And the reason we to keep people out, we, we have, you know, fires, fire and stuff. We're, we're, now we've got, we've got multifamily, single-family residences, and not just in Mount Pleasant, but in lots of places. It's, and, and our growing population is growing faster than, than we can, you know, provide housing for everybody. And I realize that it's a stress issue. However, you know, we, the government do regulate how the that we're letting things happen and people to live, to drive into some, some properties that were overoccupied. Okay, they've been, they were, there's just too many people living in there to be healthy, to be safe, to give children protection for fires and, and all sorts of, and that's family lawn, you know, your house and then the school. Maybe, maybe we'll look at how many vehicles can be there per square. You know, otherwise you can really have wall-to-wall cars up in a, up on a lawn. Just literally all cars. My mother used to say, don't you park behind me, Kerry, because I got to get up and go to work. In other words, you make sure you don't park, when I was young, a long time ago. I had to be careful because, and no, do that because we have multiple families and one gets in at six in the morning, one gets at eight and they're trying to jockey. And I respect all that, but it, where's the limit? And, and we do need to reconsider that, I think, going forward, especially with, with future developments. Future homes built. Looking at, I was so concerned about front entry garages and parking because it'll just immediately begin to be a parking problem on the streets. And I think going forward to do some, and no parking in the front. But I know it's there, but anyhow, I've I know, and there's a, I believe we draw the line as a Sydney with what we expect of people for their good. We, like I said, we, we, we government limit how many people can be in a, for safety reasons.
Note on that, that the development we were looking at for nursery garages that you were talking about.
Yes.
We actually talked to that particular person or developer about how to put this niche, what called parking in the front street. You've got your width, but then you actually. Street, you've got your width, but then you actually indent parking into it. So it would accommodate, uh, guest parking on the street.
That's great.
In residential neighborhoods.
That's, that's an option.
That's an option. In future design in the city.
Yes.
To address some of these problems. And when you go to restruct some of the roadwayways, rock wall, narrow foot street, and we put some of that niche parking in, in historic area, and that niche parking took care of those problems of, of the additional parking when people had additional cars. Often they could park there and that kind of alleviated all that in the yard parking kind of stuff. We didn't have any more of it because of that reason.
That was certain. And I know there are some going forward.
We could show you, show you the design on how to do that.
That'd be great. But anyhow, I understand, I understand it is a problem. And I have young couples, even when they're in their mid twenties, uh, young. Running out, looking for homes and I, I don't want to live over there in that neighborhood and that one. And I said, why? They said, too much parked. Even for younger people, they, they, they want it, but when they start to buy their home, mm-mm, mm-mm, too much parking. And I said, I understand. So thank.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close item 60, discuss, will now move on to seven, which is the public hearing. Parton Police Avenue to Dr. Francis Rundles Avenue in accordance with the sections 98.105-98.101-108, entitled changing street names of, of the code of ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant.
Mayor and Council, we had an application brought to us to change the street name and we have gone through all the applications. We've done the public hearing and all the notices and everything. So now it's just ready for any public comments on it and then for your decision on it.
Council, also, uh, I asked Darlene to check. That precluded us from renaming an already named street. Many cities, the ones I've been in have such an ordinance, so you don't take one name off another one. They just name new streets. We do not have an order that includes us, so, so you guys can consider this.
We have any public comment?
I do believe that Michelle Coburn is here when she would like and.
Please.
My name is Michelle Coburn.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor and council members, um, I want to, I was requested, um, by, uh, someone else to read their statement and then I'd like to read mine. Uh, four years ago, Pastor Rundles and Michael McGahey started a series of town hall style community meetings to address issues in our African-American and Hispanic communities in Mount Pleasant. Pastor Rundles and his church family not only created a venue for the meetings, but he actively participated in planning, promoting and hosting the meetings. A wide range of issues were covered from health. City issues in an open forum. The open forum received community-wide support and participation from the police department, Mount Pleasant Fire Department, Independent School District, Titus Regional Medical Center, representative Cole Heffner and businesses throughout Mount Pleasant. The first meeting in 2000. Project, an equal amount to CASA to benefit approximately 130 children that had been removed from their, fault of their own. With myself, the former executive, was that the percentage of the children receiving assistance from the program were African-American. CASA of Titus Camp and Morse Counties had zero African-American volunteer advocates for the children being served. As a result of our first community meeting, 15 African-American applicants applied to assist children in the CASA program in that one night. And that number has since grown tremendously. In 2009, Pastor Rundles was recognized by CASA for his continued support of local. Removed from their families due to abuse or neglect. Pastor Rundles is an asset to CASA, Titus Regional Medical Center, to his church and his family, a tremendous asset also to the city of Mount Pleasant. Will approve the name change of Elsie Avenue and recognize Pastor Rundles. Michael McGahey, personally, myself and my husband, that I met Brother Rundles. To do for 2016 and was immediately impressed with his genuine concern for children and families in Mount Pleasant. During the. Forum and his congregation, Dr. Rundles asked everyone to get involved and improve the lives of children and families. And the folks Rundles wanted to see are African children served with African volunteer advocates relate to, trust to, and that like them. Run to action is this, numerous children giving the highest level of advocacy to meet their needs and the needs of their families. On the way here, I drove up and down Elsie Avenue. Continued to resonate in my heart and mind. I asked straight. The Lord's direction has paved a straight path to, number one, open and safe communication for all citizens in Mount Pleasant. Number two, equity for our children and families that live here in Mount Pleasant. Number three, service to other medical needs of our community and the needs of their families. And number four, in a respectful manner, he exposed areas where Mount Pleasant citizens of others. However, it leads straight to the path of healing, hope. Others, which is what Rundles stands for in our community. And what better name for a road than a person that promotes such amazing things for our Francis.
Good evening. Hey, hey. Uh, my name's Ashton Lewis and I am speaking on behalf of the, the road change and favor Mr. Rundles. I call him Mr. Rundles because I. Since a very young man's. Current, I, I'm a sergeant on patrol with Mount Pleasant and arguably I don't get to life without standing on the shoulder, the shoulders of all the positive influences that I have had and fortunate to come in contact with as I've grown up in Mount Pleasant. And arguably, Mr. Rundles was one of those ones. Whenever me and. John were through, uh, he has affected my, my current station in life and he has certainly affected my trajectory in life. And absent his involvement, uh, I, I, I would say that I would, I would not be where I am today. So, um, I would fervently, in closing, I would fervently ask that the council. Who tonight, in honor. Honor of everything that he's done for the city and for, uh, city. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is, uh, Chris Wigley and, uh, just serving as the pastor at Trinity Baptist Church here in Mount Pleasant. And I could, an absolute honor to speak to this particular issue that you guys are considering. Took some time to familiarize myself with, uh, the code of ordinances with regards to naming streets. And, uh, one of the reasons listed there is to honor a person, place. Or subjects. Uh, tonight I think it is appropriate to honor a person. Doctor. It's indeed an honor to, uh, speak on behalf of someone that I consider a personal friend. This is a new relationship for me, but one that has progressed over a very meaningful conversation. And, uh, Dr. Rundles and I have become dear friends. Uh, in fact, this is how much I think of this man. Uh, this very evening, my daughter is playing volleyball and I've chosen to skip that in order to speak on the character of this man. A very few people worthy of such an honor of renaming a street, but I think Dr. Rundles fits that category. First Timothy 5:17. Let the whole well be considered worth double honor, especially those who labor in preaching. And, uh, Dr. Rundles is a preacher and he is a teacher. Absolute excellence. He is for decades, which I admire. Sure that I just read, I think that alone qualifies him for such an honor. But I know him not only to be a great teacher of truth, but to be one that walks in truth. He exhibits utmost character and all arenas of law. Integrity is impeccable from. My, secondly, I'd be hard pressed to find another person that has invested in this community in which Dr. Rundles has. But there are many that love this city, those that are here tonight and those that are on this council fall into that. Is doctor, I have observed. Is the benefit of this. Reveal his character and his heart. Believe Dr. Rundles is worthy of such an honor. Dr. Rundles and I initially. The healed heightened racial tension that has swept across our country. And in an effort. Conciliation group that we have lovingly call Brothers. When he speaks at the table discussion, tender heart. For the advancement of our community. Not only know his heart, but to love this man and to cherish his friendship. It is for these reasons that I. Believe of the honor of renaming Elsie Avenue. Rundles, thank you for your consideration.
Greetings. I'm Tommy O'Gorman, pastor of the Baptist Church here in town. Having a position now for over 32 years. One of a very few times that I've come to the city council, reminded tonight as to why. Your, uh, your positions are difficult. Let me just take a moment, just say I appreciate you and, uh, the things you consider even this evening. And this, I would, would maybe be a mild time, but you folks are carrying weights and I appreciate you and, and respect you. I have become acquainted with, uh, Dr. Rundles gathering with the other pastors in the area, praying over racial reconciliation and trying to say, uh, something in our city, in our community to further better what are already good relationships. But with that acquainted with him, I was glad when I. Something and, uh, I, it's something often overlooked. For this. City of high honor and certainly speak favorably about. And appreciate your, your decisions in the issue. Glad to say I'd be far, uh, that street being named after, uh, Dr. Rundles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, uh, James Turner. I am the deacon at, uh, Greater Hope Church of God in Christ. And, uh, my, my pastor is Dr. Francis Rundles. And I just want to say, great and humble man. Uh, he loves the Lord. As the honor a great man like that. And I would approve that y'all change the name to his name.
I'm Cleveland Cannon and I'm a associate minister at, uh, pastor, Dr. Francis Rundles. Only in my life. Years older than me. I know a lot of you guys are pretty this way. Old fashioned. I believe you're leaving well enough alone. I can't say, uh, what everybody done said, uh, um, he's a great man. I think he do the. Reputation, his name not everywhere. Yeah, he's a good man. Great teacher, great minister and, uh, he took me in a very critical time in my life. And, uh, and I thank him for it, uh, and I thank you to the city of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you, sir. I guess that's it for public. Didn't have anything.
Can I just say something? And, uh, I think it's obvious that, uh, Reverend Rundles, uh, needs to be honored by our, uh, I would say two things. That, uh, if you rename this street. That we typically with, as we won't change the name, our renamed streets. Sitting here listening to this, I can see where from now somebody will come and say the name of Rundles to something else. And somewhere buddy named Elsie, uh, received an honor. And I understand that, by the way, I've understood, uh, someone talked to me and said it was a, he was a community, a minority lady, lady of color. It was a great leader in the community and I think one of her grandchildren was named after her. And, um, so I would suggest that we, uh, that if there's nothing else we name, remember something, you want to change the name, I would, maybe the last time you do that so that we don't take an honor away from somebody else to, to. Given, have, so you don't keep changing names and so forth.
So is there? Something to Elsie name?
I'm sure there's lots of things, yeah.
I mean, rename this street, I don't want to do away with why she was honored years ago. Still needs to be recognized and honored in the city for, for what she did back when she was honored to have that street named after her. So I don't know what we can do in place of that if we decide to.
It, it doesn't continue right there, but it does pick up somewhere in the community and go on. I don't know how far, but it's, it, it is in another part, it kind of runs broken through town somewhere.
Does anyone know where this idea came from? That, that, to, for.
I believe we got a petition from the members on the street, right?
I know, uh, Dr. Rundles. Appreciate everybody showing up and, and, uh, speaking good words because. That's, you're not going to have anybody say anything bad about. I mean, he's a good guy. At it is is we're. I think that we put forward will be people. Are of us that. Or in my case, anyway, would be a generation or two ahead of me that influenced people that I I grew up watching. Honored by a people, one or two generations removed from him and me and him are in the same generation and I just unless. War that we named the loop for that passed in fighting. I'm willing to do that, you know?
And so in this consideration. Street is broken up because I guess what two seventy-one or which street breaks it up?
So but I mean. And by that from goes from.
Highway sixty-seven, it goes through there beside the highway department, I believe, and comes out there in front of Luigi's is Elsie Street.
But you wouldn't, part of this is not to consider renaming the entire street?
Entire street is Elsie Street.
Thatcher said sixty-seven. That's it?
Apparently. When the road was dedicated. I do know many times when when it puts in some new roads, they will come to a city or an entity and say, I'm. Going to dedicated road. I'm going to put the money in it, I'm going to build it. And then. Mr. Star, can you? They usually are dedicated with a name. And there's usually a reason why those people had a reason to name that street after that person. They had their own at that time reasons. So I'm I'm concerned that to change a name that was already named for a person to an I think it'd be great. Did. To. An existing street. I see it for here, I'd like that in the future, do we want to come in here and they're they think someone did something more effective. Than is accomplished and I think everybody here has high praise appreciates for for Dr. Rundles. But where 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 does this? And then it was a city accepted it as a public street already named because part of that. By these specs with this name, we'll and maintain it as a city street. So my concern is that the tough issue again, kind of like the parking issue. Where we as a community, I believe we we need to find a way to ask Dr. For his. His effort accomplishments and. It's already been dedicated, named and and put another person's name on it of anybody for any accolades. That they might have had and and accomplished in their in their endeavors.
Is there any relatives that you know? Exist in Mount Pleasant for the that this street was already named after?
I did a little bit of research on this and the name hasn't came up yet here, but what I what I found out, I I researched this a little and a lot of the people in this room may know. Manola Peel, does that ring a bell with anyone shake shake their head yes or no, or you never heard of her? She passed away in nineteen ninety-five. She born in nineteen oh five. Alley in Lowdy Price. The community out. Want to call it and I think that I'm sorry. Her dad was a rather large landowner out there. And had a little maybe the granddad had a grocery store out there. People in. In the. What I'm talking with with some older people said that she. Passed away. There was she had one brother, Theotis. And I think he may. We went to right. Travel ended up back here. Part of most of the price land left. And then she moved to town is what I understood. And and she kind of come a instrumental part of that part of town there at sixty-seven. And where Elsie Street is there and the next street up there, I think is Richardson Street. And she had a maybe one of the first hotels. A restaurant there. One told me that down right before you get to Heritage Park there that she had a kind of a hog farm there. Kind of where those little apartments and all are there before you. I see it out there, yes. And you know, she was in all kinds. I understand that she was one of the stakeholders in a local. Go back years ago. And she was one of the black lady that gave a lot to the community. Street was named. After is what my understanding was. Her grandfather was was Moses Moses Price. Her grandmother Emily Price. They're they're all buried out in the cemetery, her and and her husband. The Evergreen Cemetery, which I'm a lot of you in here are, that's where the grandparents are are buried. So there's a lot of history to that street. You know, that was before my time. I think. But it meaning it at that. Stage when. It was. You know. Tonight, as far as I think he's a he's a good man. He's done a lot for our community. I was I've been to a lot of the of the function that that was had over the the years in the community relations, et cetera. Attend a lot at the at the church, I think at the a couple of schools we had them at. But but there is history to that to that street to just to change the the name is to something that that has to be decided here tonight. Not. From from Tony Rundle as far as is is being qualified for a street to be named or. It's important to like one of the council, maybe it may have been Councilman Adams said, a lot of the streets are are named in neighborhoods. I'm going to use the McKeller addition out by Trinity Baptist Church. Lot of the streets out there are named after kids, kids, grandkids, et cetera. And you know, I know the neighborhood I live, there there are several streets in there that are named after the the developers. You know, there there are several around town that way. Does does Dr. Rundell deserve a place in our? Absolutely. Do we change a name would be my only question. Because. Here that know know a lot more of the history on this Manola Peel and. To but I did want to do some research on. So where did that name come from?
Yeah.
And.
I'll say this, I I made a phone call before that where the hog farm was. At some point, Rick Zachary purchased land and had a four-wheel drive shop and some apartments built and. Had told me two years ago, three years ago of a story where he was sitting in a shop one day and a lady walks in and says, you know, you owe me some money. She said, well, this is my property. And he said, no, no, you want the payment book, you don't want you don't want money, you want the payment book then. Well, long story short, I I asked him. And I said, Kenfolk to Manola Peel. And he said, yes, it was. And I said, well, tell me what happened. And so the title company actually missed the title work and it ended up in a big lawsuit and they had the the title company had to pay the lady her money and then had to pay Rick his money. And so there is family out there and they have. I mean, there is ability to contact them and I'm just curious if anybody contacted any of Manola's family. I don't know. I wouldn't know that. Okay. Okay, we have no further questions or discussions about this.
Tony, did I say, did you want to? Did you mostly wanted to speak, Tony?
Dr. Rundles, did you want to come up?
I thought he was. Now, we didn't, I I remember Miss Manola Peel, I think one of the this cross street solo that was named after her. And also we. Feel the church has started and I think is is one of the humbling things and if you know anything about me, I'm not wanting to speak about myself. You know, but the thing what happens is it was something they wanted to do, they did the proclamation and they thought with the street. It'd be a great honor, you know, and I respect whatever and I. Told them whether ye and they. Hey, we, you know, and so this is what it was about. It's not about self-grandizement or anything like that, you know? And just the the effort in the city and people thought it was a wonderful thing being the hospital board and the the chamber commerce and those things collaborating and just doing the works of the Lord. That's basically what we're doing. And since that street now has just a fuel of business and mechanical shop, the landlords were so super excited about the change of name, thought it would be a wonderful thing. And they really pushed the issue. When they asked, what do you guys think? They said, yeah, they came by and signed the petition and been calling and asking, they don't come to the agenda. So that was that was the thing there. And one of the things that I've lived here all my life and I'm about four years older than you guys, I know a whole lot older than that. But you know, the thing with it is too, just the thing we do, one of the things we do, we're doing to impact the community of Mount Pleasant. Everything, every effort, and I really I'm really glad to have an opportunity to share some of the things that's been working behind the scene that's coming to fruition now. We have correlated the Brothers United where we invite the Assistant Chief of Police and 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 the mayor has been there and those collaborations of talking, trying to heal our city. So they thought it was a great honor to be able to do something like this in the city of Mount Pleasant. About not Manola Peel, but we talked about it a descendant of Manola Peel, you know? And so that's that's one of the things my daddy retired from the city of Mount Pleasant after a long length of of service here, you know, and so those things, my family's been here forever. And I was born and raised in Mount Pleasant, Texas. Matter of fact, where our funeral home is now, it used to be old Manola Peel's land. Right. And so we purchased from them. So but God bless you, whatever you guys decide tonight is fine with us, the thing with it is too, but but opportunity to share some of the work that we are doing behind the scenes for the community, you know?
I'll say this, I I didn't realize some of the good works that you you're doing and I want to thank you for that. That's that's a. That within itself, thank you for sharing that because that's amazing. Our generation is making moves. I I'm not, you know, I just, I'm not sure that it. Me personally. The gentleman, the young man that spoke about the impact you've made on his life. Those are the people for me that that will make. They'll make a judgment on mine and your life is the people behind me and you, you know.
And I also want to share with your councilman and Michelle's here, but the the Texas Casa in Austin, Texas are watching this service tonight.
Oh, great.
They was excited about what might have been.
I tell you, I but I I want to make sure that everybody understands how much we appreciate what you've done with that because that that testimony within itself was amazing. Thank you.
But I am not a person to talk by myself.
We appreciate everything.
I will say, I will say this, what you have, what you have done and what you continue to do is beyond measure. I mean, you I I've told you this before, you've made a a great impact in life because you were someone that I looked up to. So I know what kind of man you are and whether you deserving of a street, that is unquestionable, definitely. I think at some point in time, if not tonight, you most definitely is deserving of a street. In this. And I thank you, thank you for everything you're doing.
We appreciate your service so much.
Hey, at this time, we'll go ahead and. Close item seven and move on to item eight. Item eight is to consider number twenty twenty dash seventeen, change the name of Elise Avenue to Dr. Francis Rundles Avenue in accordance with the sections ninety-eight. Point one oh five. One zero eight entitled changing street names of code ordinances for the city of Mount Pleasant. At this time, the floor is open for motion.
I move for their approval of changing the name of Elsie Avenue to Dr. Francis Rundles Avenue.
We have a motion by Mr. Jerry Walker, do we have a second? Without a second.
You move on, it dies, dies for like a second unless they second.
Okay. Well. But without a second motion, we go ahead and. All right, this is this is a tough one. Without a second, it dies and we'll have to go ahead and close this item out.
We can't go before a vote without a second motion.
So even though we may not move forward with this, is this something though that we can still entertain as far as coming up with something for Dr. Rundles to? To honor him for all the things that he's done in this community, whether it be naming a street or doing something otherwise?
Absolutely. I think it's something we need to. Yeah, you could, you could.
No, you suggest that if you if you want to do that, you might power us, maybe one or two council members and then then many of these people who spoke here tonight, maybe get together as a committee. And work on what that might be, whether it be a.
That's that's kind of what I was thinking.
A monument or something.
Really wish we could have been involved a little earlier than this to to be able to possibly have some, I mean, to. To have kind of known what our insights were to how we were doing it. We need to do that, we need to get together and find some way.
Because I I'm going to say with no doubt, he needs to be recognized and honored. And it may not be renaming this particular street, but we need to, like Mr. Thatcher said, let's put a committee together and discuss what those options are and move forward with that.
Well, especially if we'll meet with some of the people that were here discussing Dr. Rundles tonight.
Because back to echo what Mr. Thatcher said earlier, you know, this street already has some history to it with the purpose and the reason why it was named. The name it is today with many other streets within this entire city.
Right.
And it may be a dishonor for that family to.
Yeah, pull it.
To rename that at this point in time and Mr. Thatcher said, we need to consider an ordinance that we adopt going forward so. We can continue to honor those who have been named and we don't have to worry about ever renaming streets.
Yeah.
Because this is a tough position to put us all in for that, you know?
Yeah.
Well, if you're okay, I I know who the people are that are here tonight that spoke and I'll contact them as if they want to.
Yes.
Work on this committee.
Absolutely.
I think that'd be a real good idea.
Be the chair and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we'll go. But we'll go. Together honor him in some way.
Yes.
So at this time, we'll go ahead and close. Item eight and move on to item nine. Consider pay request from. Consider pay request from ETTL for work on the new sports complex.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here once again. For you for ETTL or for one thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents and one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. These, uh, into with work that was done for testing for the, uh, placement of the asphalt and these, these costs are reasonable in, in my opinion.
Uh, which layer of asphalt final or is this which asphalt testing is this for?
So this is for the final. Uh, some of this testing was actually for some areas that we, we, uh, replaced as well. So there's a little bit of both mixed in there.
But this'll, this'll pretty much wrap up, uh, anything from?
I believe so. I know that we don't have any more testing to say that there's not another charge from ETTL. I'm not exactly sure, but I, I believe this is the last invoice we should receive.
You're satisfied the services have been rendered and satisfactory?
Yes, sir, I am. We, we do have one other spot where we're going to place some other concrete that we may test, but, but it'll be minor if it's anything.
Okay.
So.
With that, I'll, I'll make, if there are no more discussions.
We have any other discussions at this time?
I'll make the motion that we consider this pay request from ETTL for the work on the new sports complex as presented and approved by Lanny.
Motion by Mr. Tim Dale, second by Mr. Jerry Walker. Madam Secretary, record the vote, please.
Councilmember Chappelle, uh, Spruill, uh, Dale, uh, Walker, uh, Adams.
Uh.
Motion carries unanimously. Will now close that item and move on to item ten.
Consider approval of contract with KSA on a twelve inch west loop water line.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I should remember we talked about, uh, looping, uh, taking water out Monticello to the loop and then north to, what's the FM road?
Uh, eight ninety-nine.
Eight ninety-nine and then connect in there. So it'll loop that line and put water out on the loop and, uh, uh, on the highway. We talked with, in fact, uh, Herman's in the back there, but the Industrial Development Corporation considered this and have agreed through a motion to, uh, work with us and participate at fifty percent up to five hundred thousand dollars. So fifty percent up to a million dollars. So they'll pay five hundred thousand up to five hundred thousand. So we estimated that that would be somewhere around nine hundred and fifty thousand or something.
It's, it's right at a million dollars and the fees that we're discussing that are included in that nine hundred thousand.
Okay.
Now, we're, we're talking about the old Winfield Road. We're talking about eight ninety-nine?
Yes, sir. Uh, it's from, it's along the, the new loop from FM one twenty-seven around a.
And this, this is mainly for hopefully new development out in, in that?
It's for opening new developments while serving a new, uh,
New business.
Few businesses coming in out there.
Yeah.
Lanny, which, so which way, where's the twelve inch tying in to?
So it's gonna, it's gonna tie in on one twenty-seven and on eight ninety-nine.
From one twenty-seven, okay.
And, and we decided to go with twelve instead of ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think, I think that's better, yeah.
Nathan mentioned that the, uh, that the, um, refi- old refinery site and everything, it makes it more developable, having that water there too. So.
Absolutely.
Lanny, is all that right away for that? Is that in the existing, the state right away or is it private?
Lanny is being in the state right away along the entire route. There's also going to be a, a bore underneath the railroad. So there's, so, so part of these fees involve, correspondence with Texas as well as correspondence with the railroad and the permitting process for that.
Roughly where would it tie in? I, I know you're not probably familiar. Wayne Garrison lives on that corner. Is it close to the corner there or is it, is it up more?
I'm gonna let Anthony answer. Where, all the people where they.
We have a six inch line on eight ninety-nine that is Elise Street.
Okay.
And so we'll tie there to that six inch and then route back around to one twenty-seven type loop sixteen.
Okay, I got you. Okay. Okay, what are we talking about?
Is, is there any, uh, cost savings at the same time we run that twelve inch to run sewer in parallel with that?
There's really not because you've got to have a separation distance there. So you're gonna be digging an entirely different trench as well. And, and part of the, um, part of the reason that we're holding off on the sewer right now, partially because there is just one business out there and partially because we're still trying to develop that plan of what the best approach is on how to deliver that sewer.
I know you guys forget, but when you're bringing us these requests, even though we already talked about it, it, to the best of your ability, would you always include a plat to show us the properties and where the proposed lines are? It's just hard, and I know the city of Mount Pleasant pretty well and it's still hard for me to sometimes visualize where we're talking about.
That's part of what he's gonna do in his preparation. He'll, he'll bring those, he'll prepare those and we'll see where it's gonna be before we ever award the bid or even go out to bid, but we'll see that.
Yeah.
Where it'll be lined up and he'll do all the.
And just thought this, but all the time when we're, when we're seeing new things that need to be done, repaired, added, when you're gonna bring us proposals, it helps for me if I had with, you know, this is the property it'll affect. Here's where have a better feel for it.
Well, and I appreciate that.
Otherwise it's just words. It's a twelve inch water line loop, da-da-da-da-da.
And, and actually we always develop that drawing when we do these estimates anyway. So it's already, it's already.
And I'm sure y'all do, but on every issue I'm asking, and I know, I'm not criticizing anybody, but it would help me a lot when I'm making these decisions to see a drawing, a proposal or, you know, where it's gonna, the, the affected neighborhood, the property, whatever.
Sure.
Thank you. So are we voting on this tonight?
Yep.
To authorize him to, to develop the plans.
This is just for the authorization to develop the plan.
Plans.
Okay.
I move that we approve a contract with KSA on twelve inch water, west loop water line.
Okay, next time give me a chance to open it up to the floor. All right, we have a first by Mr. Galen Adams, second by Mr. Henry Chappell. Madam Secretary, record the vote.
I do have another question. Is this where we do discussion?
Yep.
At the point, um, where, you mentioned it's half a million dollars. Could you refresh my memory on how we got into that, how we're getting that help with this, where that came from? Does it, and I'm, I know I get a little thick-headed. We hear a lot of stuff.
That's right. Um, uh, when we talked about it, um, I think when Nathan was at that meeting, but we talked about it and I, I and he talked about that and Lanny about taking water out to the loop and taking, right, because we really want to figure out a way to get it now under the loop on the other side and so it can, the loop can be developed. And, uh, Nathan had been talking about that with his board and, uh, and, uh, so that night, uh, we, I think we had an estimate somewhere between nine hundred million dollars and, um, it's been more refined now, but, um, uh, Nathan said he was gonna take it back to his board because they, they are looking at the old refinery site as well as developing out there on the, uh, on the loop. And, uh, and it was a couple of weeks just approved to spend fifty percent of the project or pay for fifty percent up to five hundred thousand they'd pay. And, and our estimates, a million.
Yeah. We're, I should say for the ten inch line, it was nine eighty something. We start out with the out there and we could run a two inch line of them for three hundred and forty-six thousand and we could do an eight inch line for eight hundred thousand. We could do a ten inch line for nine hundred thousand. And they mentioned IDC and I said, well, I told him to ask IDC if they had to help fund half of, because they mentioned half funding, half of it. And I said, would you not do the ten inch line? And they said, but IDC won't do the twelve inch line. And I said, hey, I love that. Let's go. And so that's where we ended up.
Great. Just, I appreciate the refreshing of the progression.
We're done?
You need to vote.
Yeah. Just making sure.
Not quite done yet.
Okay. Motion's been made. Madam Secretary, record the vote.
Councilmember Chappelle, uh, Spruill, uh, Dale, uh, Walker, uh.
Uh.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much again, Lanny.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close item ten. We're now on item eleven. Uh, consider appointment of members to the planning and zoning commission.
Mayor members of the council, uh, uh, Robert, been meeting, he's been at a couple of times with our PNC, planning zoning commission. We have two vacancies and we really need, uh, because of all the work we've got to do, we need, these positions are replaced and, uh, we sent this out to you with some names and it's your pleasure who you want to appoint. We'd kind of like them appointed tonight so we can get on with the business at hand.
At this time, I'd, I would like to, there's been, uh, first of all, let me say, we always want to thank the people that are willing to serve on these boards. Uh, it's very, very important that we, that we have these board members and, uh, do we, the, the city just couldn't function without them. I mean, that's all there is. I mean, to me is they're, they're very, very important. So I just want to say thanks to all the people that did throw their name in the, in the proverbial hat, uh, uh, two that, uh, that we, uh, that I'd like to possibly recommend. But one would be Charles Thomas. He's a, a local builder here, the Thomas Brothers, uh, I think most everyone's familiar with, uh, and he's accepted and said he'd be happy to, and all, uh, Greg is a, a local banker and, uh, also, uh, he was on Frazel District Board at one time. Uh, I think, uh, I think these would be two good candidates to add to the three existing candidates that we have now that are, that are good board members and we appreciate their service.
I'll second both of those names.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay. Well, we have a motion by Mr. Tim Dale, second. Galen?
Yep.
You seconding it? Okay. Second by Mr. Galen Adams. Uh, Madam Secretary, record the vote.
Councilmember Chappelle, uh, Spruill, uh, Dale, uh, Walker, uh, Adams.
Uh. Yeah, we close item eleven. We'll move on to item twelve. Consider approval of award bid. Two dash twenty-one, May twenty twenty-one.
You done, Mr. Ras?
Mayor and Council, this is just our yearly, uh, annual for, for, uh, it provides us for our material that we do through the year and, uh, that's about all it is.
You're, you're familiar with them and you're happy with them?
Oh, we've been with, um, we've been with underground utilities. Uh, they provide us the service we need. We tried several years ago, about ten, I guess now, to branch out. We had about eight different vendors and it didn't work out. So we went back to the.
I remember that.
The whole sole, sole source bid. They provide us with our fire heaters that we sole source. Instead of having five or six different fire heaters at town, we only have the one and just they, they do a really good service.
So it's basically like a one-stop shop?
Yes, and we can call them anytime day or night and they'll, they've got great contacts and they get us what we need.
And again, for the public, just for their knowledge, this is a yearly bid. Yeah. For their, we're, we're looking at all of it here.
Yeah, the, uh, you know, and on this thing, bit of seven hundred, it's just parts. If you'll go through it's several, several bid items. We don't use all that. Typically, I mean, our, our bid for utilities for water and sewer is usually about, about a hundred and eighty thousand a year. So I just want, you know, we don't spend seven hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, these are just numbers of what it, what, what each item costs.
Right. It just gives us, if we do need it, then instead of us going out and having to get a higher price, we have a price already.
So do you just keep a few of these items on hand and they, they stock, we?
Yes, sir. We, yeah, we don't have a big enough place for stock. So they do that and then they're just in long view. So I mean, we can make phone calls and have it to us very quickly or we can bring it.
I'm curious, how often do they, they bring your product?
Every, every two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
Every two weeks they bring it and they don't charge us for delivery.
Good. Didn't know that.
Then the, they have a guy that works with us, Rick, and he'll bring it to us immediately. So I mean, we just, they're just a phone call.
Sounds like a good working relationship with them.
Anthony's ever let you know if they end up having to substitute an item with a different?
No, sir, that we don't, what's in our bid is what we get.
Okay, so they stick to that?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Okay, at this point, we'll open the floor up for a motion if there's no further question, discussion.
I make a motion that we consider approval and award utility bid number two dash twenty twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Henry Chappell, second by Mr. Galen Adams. Madam Secretary, record the vote, please.
Councilman Adams.
Uh.
Walker. Dale.
Uh.
Spruill.
Uh.
Chappelle.
Motion carries unanimously.
Now close item twelve, move to item thirteen. Consider approval to extend chemical bid number three, dash twenty twenty-one.
I believe we had to extend that, um, when we went for the chemical bids, uh, the, the only company, um, DPC that provides our chlorine and our, uh, sulfur dioxide in this region, in this area, they did not receive the bid package because the guy that did it, um, had retired and so the email went to his old email account and it was bypassed. So we had to extend this and that's what you're looking at now.
Otherwise we wouldn't have the TB.
So we need to do the extension.
I need to, I need to approve the extension. Okay. I'll move it. We extend chemical bid number three dash twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion. You, you made a motion, right?
Yep. Need a second.
And I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Galen Adams, second by Mr. Henry Chappell. Madam Secretary, record the vote, please.
Councilmember Adams.
Uh.
Walker.
Uh.
Dale.
Uh.
Spruill.
Uh.
Chappelle.
Uh.
Yeah, that item is now closed, carries unanimously. We'll move on to item fourteen. Consider approval and award a chemical bid number, wait a minute, you got that on there?
That's the one we don't need to do.
Yeah, we don't need, yeah, okay.
We'll do it later.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and.
Should have pulled it off.
Yeah, that one, that one should have been pulled.
Move item fourteen, uh, go to item fifteen. Consider approval to extend concrete bid number four, dash twenty twenty-one.
You know about that one?
I can tell you about that one. The
You did.
You've got it? Uh, the concrete bid, uh, we didn't get your, we didn't get any bids on it.
Same reason.
Right. So there was no bid. So we just have to extend it. So we've got, um, uh, a concrete guy trying to get insurance and, uh, I believe the other guy didn't get his package. So they're, they asked for extension and.
Yeah. Two bids.
Other was no bids on this time. There's possibly two bids coming.
Two bids, yeah.
Waiting on the insurance and a few dot and i's and cross and t's for the companies.
Right.
Okay, so we need, just go ahead and, uh, for extending it. So the floor is now open.
I'll make a motion that we approve this extension for the concrete bid, uh, number four dash twenty twenty-one as presented. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Tim Dale, second by Mr. Henry Chappell. Madam Secretary, record the vote.
Councilmember Adams.
Uh.
Walker. Dale.
Uh.
Spruill.
Uh.
Chappelle.
Motion carries unanimously. Now move on to item sixteen.
Consider rated weather observations bid number six, dash twenty twenty-one.
We don't make Paul stay up too late normally, but tonight he, he's got some big items tonight.
Did you notice Paul how long, how far down the agenda yours was?
Uh, no, I didn't point that out.
You want to explain this, Paul?
The, um, we call it Awas. It's the weather station at the airport. And you say, well, what's it for? It's so the aircraft can, cloud heights are, so they can get into the airports and land and that sort of thing. What makes it so important is that all of the, uh, medical helicopters and flats, whether they be fixed wing jets or, or water planes coming from Children's Medical out of Dallas or whatever, or the, the helicopter at the hospital or, and other medical helicopters. They fly under the federal aviation rules, part one thirty-five. They can't come in if the weather is, is a cloud layer, they can't come into our airport without. this weather station it is. If it's my grandchild they need to pick up, I want that weather station there. Our old weather station is antiquated, they don't support, they like the solometer that tells the cloud heights anymore. And it's just about obsolete, it's eight years old, it was, back then, it was an eighty-eight thousand dollar item. So it's, it's went up some. But it's, it's a big need for the airport.
Paul, is this the same piece of equipment during our budget workshop? That you just?
When I, when I came in last year, Paul said we need a new one. And we put the budget together and I said, we don't have the money for that and he said, okay. Okay, so we need to explain how this is being paid for because Paul went to work and really works with the state closely and so forth. And might explain what kind of a good deal we got on this.
We did get a good deal. We are receiving a sixty-nine thousand dollar grant that we're applying to part, purchasing part of this. And, and it's part of the CARES Act. And we feel real fortunate that we got it. A lot of the airports our size got twenty thousand dollar grant or thirty thousand dollar grant. But they put us up at the same level as airports like Greenville and Fort Worth Spinks and David Wayne Hooks Houston, thought about our, you know, our airport, for us to get the sixty-nine thousand dollar grant. We've contacted Tech Dot and the, the next item on the agenda is our ramp grant maintenance program. They'll fund up to fifty thousand dollars of this same weather station. So it's gonna end up costing us probably forty thousand dollars for a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars.
Good things happen to those who wait, I guess.
That's the way I see it.
Well, y'all do a super job out there with airport, Paul, you really do. It's, it's to be committed, it's a big asset to our community. And, and I think this, this speaks well to be able to get these grants and them realize what, I say them, I'm talking about the the grant providers and for us to be able to go to this and then ask for it and they see that, that it's well spent. Well, thank you for going extra.
And let me say, Paul doesn't just maintain the airport, he does maintain it and he's on the tractor lot mowing. But what he does here, bringing these grants and standing on top of stuff and getting, we're recognized. I mean, the length of airport, you guys already know, the airport in this state is recognized as one of the really nice ones in the state.
And again, that comes back, we were talking previously about our boards, you know, you have a great board out there that are here in the back, I know he's been very supportive over the, over the years with the, as a board member and all and that's, you've had, you've had good support.
We really have. Without Herman's help, we wouldn't be what we are today.
Paul, so this bid, total bid price, is that a do to get it up to standards, working, functional? Has built documents to you to have on file, to keep for records, purposes, et cetera?
Well, parts manuals and that sort of thing.
And there's, does this price include any type of training for you and your, your team?
Well, we've been doing this for eighteen years now.
Well, I know there's gonna be a lot of new, a new way to look at how it navigates, how you click the mouse and move around and operate it, so.
They'll bring us up to speed on it.
Within this price, not hit us up with an extra fee for training?
No, no, this is the complete price.
Okay, good deal.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
We're getting a bang for the buck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
It's now open for motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the automated weather observation bid number six dash twenty twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Henry Chappelle, second by Mr. Galen Adams, Madam Secretary, please.
Councilmember Adams. Walker. Dale. Spruill. Chappelle.
Paul, so since this has been approved, how soon will this?
We plan on doing it in October.
I'd like to get a tour of that when it's
Oh, you bet. Yeah, anytime.
Okay, we'll move on to item seventeen. Item seventeen was consider approval of Tech Dot amount of a hundred thousand dollars for routine airport maintenance program. And signature for grant acceptance.
I've been working with Paul on this ramp grant and a lot of it has to be done online and requiring an electronic signature. And we'll submit it with it. Asking your submit for the ramp grant through Tech Dot and authorize me to do an electronic signature.
And that would be your signature?
Yeah.
He's doing all the correspondence and to her and it's just, if you authorize her to sign, it'll just be quicker, you don't have to run around trying to get somebody to do it.
And Paul, with this with, with this grant, what will that allow you to do with the, with this ramp?
We can do a lot of things with that grant. Of course, it's gonna, it's gonna help us to, to fund the, the AWAS. But we buy herbicesticides, we buy runway light bulbs, we fix small asphalt repairs. You name it, we, we do, they'll fund just about anything that has to do with maintenance of an airport, you know? And they're paying half the bill, so it's a win-win for us.
And once he does all that, I'll have to go online and upload all the invoices and do all the quarterly reports and all that stuff and everything.
And do you know roughly what the lead time is on once you get the electronic signature in? Before you know if the grant's approved or?
Instantly.
Yeah, it's, it'll be really fast. So as soon as I, I just, right now, all that's waiting is for this to be approved, we have all the documents in. I just need to go in and hit, hit sign and send it through and we should know, so.
All right, thank you, Mckay.
Thank you.
Floor is open for a motion on this item.
And that we consider this approval of Tech Dot ramp grant in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for the routine maintenance program and authorize the Director of Finance to submit an electronic signature for the grant acceptance as presented tonight.
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Tim Dale, second by Mr. Jerry Walker.
Adam. Walker. Dale. Spruill.
Hi.
Chappelle.
Now close item seventeen, we'll move on now to item eighteen. Consider approval of, for renewal of the cap risk actuarial services twenty twenty-five to continue actuarial the new GSB seventy-five reporting requirements for other post-employment benefits.
This is required per GSB seventy-five, which is basically, what they do is that we have to hire an actuarial service to go through and go cost for our retire our employees. So they go out and look at how much it would cost the city for all of our employees if we retire. So if any of our basic would retire, what would be our workers' comp liability, health? What, what all of those benefits cost the city? And then after they do relation of what those costs are. And then we prepare another set of books in the front that's called government-wide financials. And then we book the financials that that liability is known to y'all, so y'all would know the city were to retire, how much it would cost y'all.
At the same day?
Yes, on the same day.
Now, is this service, is this a yearly program or is this a five-year?
So we usually do a five-year contract with them. There's, they're real services, so they're not bid because typically one
Perform.
You have done this, yeah, we've done this firm for the last five years, so we're just
This will run through the
Through the twenty twenty-five year, yeah, they're doing a, not to exceed for us. They'll come in, they'll do all of our stuff and it'll just be an all-inclusive flat lease, they'll do our reports, look at all the employee cost. And they'll take it out for the sixty years or ninety years, however it is, and figure out how much it costs and they'll provide the report to our auditors. And then our auditors will take all the, I mean, it's like fourteen pages of required schedules that have to go in our audit. And then they'll figure out what the dollar value is and make those, and book those entries in our audit for us. And they'll do that every year for the next five years, so.
For the public, this is forty-nine, oh, four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, that is for the whole five years.
Well, they'll do, it's four thousand nine hundred and fifty a year, so.
It's per year?
Yeah, it's per year.
Just make sure we're completely transparent in everything we do.
So it says it will not exceed four thousand nine hundred and fifty. Do you have any examples of what would make it lower? I mean, why would they?
So if all of, if they have all the information that comes through, if I can get them all the informations, you know, and I can do some of the work on my side, then sometimes they, if, then they would, because they, they bill it based on actual work performed and time it takes them to perform the work. So if it doesn't cost them as much time, and like sometimes in second and third years, it doesn't cost them as much time, so then it could, they it could, I will do everything on my part to get them the information and get it to them in the, in needed in. Perhaps it could come in a little bit lower.
So just for the public reference again here, just for their knowledge, you know, they do work here in Texas, Oklahoma and all across the US. A lot of, they're a big outfit, they've been doing Mount Pleasant since two thousand thirteen, correct?
That's correct. Lot of these, only like one or two, I think maybe even three in the entire United States. Those that kind of work. And so it's not like if we actually bid this out, you're not required to bid this time. They bid it, they're so it's sort of a single-source type of service, so. But they'll, they'll take care of all of our government accounting needs and do all the, whereas Lennando will actually present a report and when they get that report, I'll bring it back to you. And they'll tell you this huge number that our benefits cost and, you know, but it's, it's just what they're required to do, so.
Are we required to have a service, are we required to do this as a city?
Yes, you are, all cities are.
It's hard for some of us to understand, you need to know what it'd take if everybody retired the same day, because nobody's ever gonna retire all the same day. Just being, it's, all purpose is to be transparent so people will know, citizens say, that's what we're gonna be paying out the next sixty years in case they needed to, or they they wanted to know, it's crazy. It's not crazy, but it's, it's, it's like a lot of busy work. Now, Mikael can, but I think it's a lot of busy work, but it's required by law.
It really No, I, I just wondered if this, if this and if it is required, how come there's not more people doing it?
It is required, it is required by the law. Every city has to have this report.
I can't believe there's not more companies doing it, it's strange.
Well, and it's mostly
Would you wanna do it?
Well, I wouldn't be smart enough to do it.
Education and it's and there's just not a lot of train trained actual
Something else to do like that, but, but not, we're gonna be in compliance, we'll be in compliance.
So I mean
I just wondered.
It is, you take the age of a person and you have to multiply what you think their lifespan will be times what the lifespan is, you know.
I have a suggestion to give them for a few of the people.
We good, we good, we good.
Mikael, if it get cranked up, let's get this going.
All right, at this time, the floor is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we renew the GSB seventy-five reporting.
Brisk.
Yeah, cap risk.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Galen Adams, second by Mr. Tim Dale, Madam Secretary, record the vote.
Thank you, Mikael.
Councilmember Chappelle. Spruill. Dale. Walker. Adams.
Motion carries unanimously. Now close item eighteen, we'll move on to item nineteen. Item nineteen is consider declaring item surplus and allow for disposal.
This is, Mayor and Council, this is an item where over the years, we get lots of old desks or, or parts, I don't know what all things, filing cabinets and stuff, it's been collected for a long time. So you give us approval to dispose of it, we put it up for people come in and buy it, citizens can and employees can, but they come in and buy it.
Publish on our website?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know that and stuff, yes.
Okay.
Tell them the day and how it works.
So it's like a citywide garage sale?
Yes, it's exactly like that.
So the money received for that, what?
Christmas party. No, I'm teasing, it goes into the general fund, goes back to the general fund, I'm sorry, it's getting late.
Okay.
What? Yeah, my travel budget is.
I'll make a motion that we declare the item surplus and allow for their disposal, let's present it.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Tim Dale, second by Mr. Henry Chappelle. Madam Secretary, record the vote.
Councilmember Adams. Walker. Dale. Spruill.
Hi.
Chappelle.
Motion carries unanimously. Now close item nineteen and we'll move on now to item twenty, which is the public comment. If we, first off, Madam Secretary, do we have anyone that have a comment on that?
There are no online.
No online, okay. All right, if we have anyone that want to speak here publicly today, please, limited to two minutes. Hey, you good right there? Yeah, there you go.
Good evening, my name is Nigel Christopher. I have a business here and I, my wife and I, we bought a very old house nearly two years ago, which we're in the process of renovating on the west side of, on, in fact, on West First Street. And we end up driving back through the west side of town, up Edwards and so on, late in the evening and see all the cars that you were discussing earlier. I think if you looked at it and did a quick survey of some sort on where the parking issues are, I would suspect that the majority of the issues are with rental houses. And maybe getting some more information about that and then maybe looking more at you know, how, how do you control excessive parking at rental properties rather? Because, you know, driving through the west side of town, there's a lot of people improving their own properties, there's a lot of new fences going up and houses being renovated and things. And you've got this conflict of rental properties dragging down the value of people's property that they're living in and, you know, trying to improve upon. Yeah, approach along those lines might, might help you get there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Council, I wanted to, to speak to you guys on the upcoming event that's coming, it's called Stripes for Blue.
Can you give us your name and address?
Name and address? Ashton Lewis. Mount Pleasant Police Department. So, no, Stripes for Blue, one twenty-two is, it's quickly, it's fastly approaching, it's, it's gaining a lot of steam. And I wanted to take this opportunity, use this platform to communicate, first off, my gratitude and the city's involvement. It really means a lot for the guys at the, at the station and we really hope to make an impact in the community. And to, two, to kind of give, give you guys to, to be abreast of what's currently going on. I don't know how much you guys know about it, can I ask, do you, do you guys know anything about it at all, just quickly?
When is it scheduled?
It's on, it's the twenty-eighth, so
September?
Yeah, so I'm going to go real quick, just give you guys a synopsis for the ones that aren't too familiar with it. It's for suicide awareness for veterans and first responders. And each leg is going to be dedicated to a service member who's fallen to suicide in that line, in those lines of career. So the first leg is going to be dedicated to a soldier, and we're going to go straight from here all the way to Mount Vernon. So with that, we've partnered with a, a nonprofit called Code Nonprofit and Project, and they're coming down on the nineteenth, uh, to, to start getting everything going with the event. The, it has local and national attention in terms of news. I just got word today that Greenville, uh, the Herald and, uh, the Herald and Greenville, Roy City, and Rockwall have picked the story up. Uh, let's see, I want to make sure I won't say it wrong. KXXV, which it's a, some type of, it's Channel twenty-five in Temple. And then we got Fox and Waco on the event. Everybody's going to cover it. And then on the twenty-fifth, they're going to come down. They're going to do an exclusive on the event, uh, that day. And we should have someone there that day. So, uh, just kind of wanted to keep you guys up to date on that. If you have questions, uh, please, please direct them to me. Uh, we really, really want to make a, a good impact. You know, the, it's all about trying to make a positive impact in the community. It's to show that, you know, we're here for, for one another and the community at large, because suicide reaches so, so, so much further than first responders. So it's going to be a huge undertaking. It's going to be a six-day walk, about twenty miles a day. And on the sixth day, there is an after-walk celebration. We secure the Artisan in downtown Dallas. It's a patio. It'll be food and drink. You guys are more than welcome to be there if y'all are so inclined, uh, to celebrate the walk and then to, uh, to help further bring awareness to suicide. So I'm very interested. I'd like a dialogue with you guys. I only have two minutes.
Is it, is there anything that we can do for you?
Uh, no, I mean, as, as of right now, um, I've, I've been in contact with Brendan just earlier this week about running the ad about the week of, of the event. Help us with, uh, sound system, because we're going to have a short ceremony. We're going to start at eight. We're going to be walking no later than ten. We got to get on the road quick, because we're going to be walking for eight hours a day. So.
It, could we get, uh?
I was going to.
Put it on that and get, get that put on, pushed out over our Facebook and website?
It's, uh, we, we've run it. Uh, we've, we had all the information. Uh, we, myself, as of the board, we're actually driving the route again tomorrow to meet with all the municipalities. It's been a huge undertaking to, to get all these resources in line along the corridor. So we're going to start out, last time we. Some park in Garland, got all those contacts, and we've been giving out event packets. The city should have received an event packet. I gave it to Assistant Chief Holcomb, uh, along with the, uh, the permit that I had to fill out. So all that stuff, and it, and the key thing about that, guys, is that there is a link in the event pack. Packet that you turn by turn. It'll even give you an estimated time of, you know, walk and time of arrival.
Let us know if anything comes up that we can help you with.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Right now, as of, as of right now, uh, the, um, in terms of, that's pressing. She's going to be down here on the nineteenth. If you guys are so inclined, she would love to meet with you so that you guys could answer, ask any question. Uh, you know, about the event itself. So we're really for, you know, at least East Texas, that, you know, Mount Pleasant is, is. And we're, we're going to prove it. You know, we're, we're. And, uh, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, make a huge impact.
Walkers, do you have?
So, great question. So we, so different at each leg, but for the first leg, we've budgeted for approximately fifty walkers that day. Uh, like I said, we've broken the, we've broken walk down because some people are marathon. So like the first, first leg, they'll, they maybe walk six miles and they're done, and then it'll be a group of fifteen to twenty walkers that's going to, that's going to soldier on. So it's not a political statement, guys. You're going to see a lot of flags, but it's only, it's going to be the military flags, uh, first responders, EMS, fire, all of those are going to be represented. There'll be no political statement involved. It is purely for suicide awareness and outreach. So.
Would there be a vehicle for Sherry not to ride in?
You know, if you, if you guys want to ride, uh, we, we partner with TM. You know, I mean, if you guys want to ride the memorial truck all the way to Mount Vernon.
That's kind of a joke. We, we marched in a, in a parade, and Sherry got a ride before we got through. That's just.
Before we got a block.
Chief Fizball rescued me.
Well, uh, if you guys can be there, that'd be great. Um, like I said, we're trying to, we're certainly trying to, uh, set the tone. How that it's been about three months and worked several man hours from here, uh, all the way where we've been getting nothing but good, good feedback from everyone. So, uh, I, I can't wait to see what happens and I.
Thank you for recognizing this and, and being a part of it.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Pass it on to them, to everyone.
That's, it's tremendous.
We'll make sure we get it to our PR to, to see if we can get it on our city webpage.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. It was, it was in the newspaper already, but, uh, yeah, whatever you guys can do, thank you so much. And I appreciate y'all's time. Appreciate what y'all do. Y'all's success is a, a high priority for me. So I really want y'all to be successful. But, uh, but yes, if you, if y'all have questions about the event, a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, bud.
Thank you very much.
Let me do. Debbie Corbell, I'm retired after thirty-three years with the city, and I live in the city of Mount Pleasant. Go over something that I had submitted once before to be read when the council meetings were. But I have, uh, I have some comments I'd like to make. Um, there are a lot of things that are still being. What has and what is going on with the city. One of the concern, and I've questioned and have spoken to others and some of y'all about, is what happened to keep our building official from providing the permitting and inspection services for the Mount Pleasant Independent School District Pro, project. And the reason I'm bringing this up again is because I have spoken to Mr. For permission to read things. And he had told me that he was contacted by the Mount Pleasant Superintendent, Mr. Marshall, as to what happened to Mr. Parrott being removed as the inspector over their building project. Mr. Marshall told Mr. Parrott of conversations with city manager Ed Thatcher. It appears that even though we had one of the most qualified building officials in the country, one that had already given an estimate that permits would cost less than ninety thousand dollars, something happened to get him removed from the project and pushed to retire. In discussing this with Mr. Parrott, it seems that while he was assuming he, the city staff, would be making the inspections, as the city had always done, Mr. Thatcher had contacted the Mount Pleasant Independent School District Superintendent and told him that the project permits should have been around two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that they weren't being charged enough. It appears that Mr. Thatcher also mentioned bringing in a third-party contractor to the inspection process, Bureau Veritas. Standing that another amount was also mentioned of a hundred and sixty thousand or so. Now, here's my question. Why was our city manager contacting the school district superintendent about the permitting process in the first place? And why was he talking about bringing in a third-party contractor from the Metroplex? He had mentioned that he had worked with several times before. I may have understood if Mr. Parrott could not have handled the job, but he was confident that he could have even after retirement. Also, the current employee, the building official, who should have been doing the inspections. And why was there so much difference in the amount of money that was quoted? First time, and then the second time, a different amount from what was finally settled on?
I'd stop at the two minutes. I, 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 over two, two minutes, I actually went over a little.
Two minutes?
Yeah, that, that's what I was trying to give everybody.
Okay.
But that.
My question with those numbers, and why does it appear that negotiating was going on for an outside contractor? Why is it that after all this got public, the amount being dropped was at, was dropped three thousand, which I think is what y'all finally agreed on? My question is, go from a hun, two hundred and forty to a hundred and twenty. Why is there a hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference in it? Concern is that the, you're told Mr. Parrott on June the second, Tuesday, that he, Mr. Parrott, would be doing the inspections for the school project, not. Thatcher said that the councilman Tim Dale had told Mr. Thatcher that Mr. Parrott should be doing the inspections. And I think Mr. Parrott actually talked to Mr. Dale and thanked him.
Ms. Debbie, that, that, that's all the time.
One minute, they discussed the, the final project, that the amount that he would be paid even after retirement to finish that project. This was Tuesday morning before council meeting. What happened at council meeting that night? Who said what? Was it talked in executive session? Why? Mr. Parrott told that he no longer will be doing the project, and then there's discussion. What happened that Tuesday night at council? Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to respond to that quickly. Uh, first of all, first of all, Ms. Corbell wasn't involved in any. She got her information. The other part of it is, it's an H, it's a human resource personnel matter. And so, uh, I can't discuss in this meeting or in the public or with anybody. Uh, Mr. Parrott's free to discuss what he wants with her and, and let Debbie Corbell carry the water for him if he wants. But I'll say Debbie must have come up with the two forty, two hundred and forty thousand. Never was a number there. Uh, and I was told, uh, uh, by Eddie that it would be about fifteen thousand dollars. When we looked at it, it was really a hundred and sixty. And we met with the superintendent, by the way, I met with the superintendent, because that's my job. And we met with him and explained to him it wouldn't be fifteen thousand dollars for a permit. It'd be, it should be more like a hundred and sixty or seventy or eighty or whatever. We calculated it out. And then we met with him and negotiated it down to a hundred and twenty thousand by doing some of the fire inspections ourselves and so forth. That's such a tremendous amount of inspections that need to be done on a daily basis out there that one guy here would just be out there all the time if they were doing all the inspections they should do, would be out there all the time and would not have time for the city. So that's why on a big project like that, you go to a third party. I don't know anything about somebody that I know or a buddy of mine. Uh, Bureau Veritas is, is a company that does these big projects all the time. So I did meet with the superintendent, Mr. Marshall, and, uh, and we worked it out, uh, to the, to, I think, a better solution than we ever had as far as the personnel issues, uh.
Ms. Adams.
Um, the last few council meetings, we had a public statement, uh, that was submitted. I've contacted several of this person's Facebook friends and also even asking for the assistance of her local print media personnel. It, as of this time, I've had no reply, uh, return reply. So I will put this out there. If Annie Johnson does really exist and wants to have a conversation, I'm available to have a meeting at City Hall. The statements were made on the premise of speaking for the community as a whole, for the firing of Ed Thatcher and/or an investigation of Ed and the incidents in question. As for Ed Thatcher and the accusations made against him, we have had a completed investigation. The accusations against him are not true. And from here forward, if you have any questions, you should contact the city's lawyer, who is Lance Vincent, at his office in Tyler. He can be reached at nine oh three, five three five, two nine zero zero. This will be the litigation. I've taken a little bit of time to put together a list of accomplishments by the council with the leadership of Ed and his team of seasoned employees and even new hires. I'm going to read a few of them as we go along here. We had a franchise fee fine of approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars stemming from a property that was never properly placed in the city limits. We would have been getting fees all along, had proper steps of annexation and notification been taken. The property involved was Newlywed Foods and Pilgrims. We collected six-month portion of the franchise fees. Can you imagine the amount of dollars that were left on the table as to how long Pilgrims had been here? And how long Newlywed had been here, twelve to fifteen years at this point, and we only collected six months worth, and it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately. We commissioned a franchise fee audit for the remainder of the city and every utility operating in the city. The findings already have said that two companies have expired agreements running out in two thousand and fifteen. We should get a full report next year on the audit, and early reports are most likely there is more money that was not being collected properly. This is the responsibility of the city to provide the utility with the information needed to collect and remit to us, not the responsibility of the utility. A streetlight audit of every streetlight in the. Wattages and charges for lights no longer located at marked location, as well as wattages of bulbs and verification of charges for the proper wattages, netting a check to the city for the amount of approximately one sixty to one eighty. That's a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars just for streetlights. We're presently working on a car fleet agreement. Early reports say that the city could save over five hundred thousand dollars in eight years. This will put city employees in forty-eight new vehicles this year for the same two hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget. Money for only six new cars across the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget. Identifying and applying for pending grants of five thousand dollars for updates to the Main Street designated area by bringing in Taylor and. The net effect is we spend seven thousand in funds, and we get five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of progress on our IT service, bringing in Datamax, leading us to find where extremely little areas of security to storage. In the case of computer security, we did not have adequate backlands in place to get the city back up and running ASAP in case of cyber attack. This includes the apartment. Several hardware items were noted to be end of life, so out that they were no longer supported. We upgraded the hardware, and though we spent money, the net effect of this change will ultimately. Currently upgrading our master plan for P and Z. This should be done every five years. Your job as a city planner or a city leader is to look forward, not to try to play catch-up after years of neglecting the master plan. Implementing a capital improvement project plan. This includes street, water, sewer projects over the next ten years. Our first project came in three hundred thousand under budget. Repairing the city police department roof, which had been a problem since it was built. Roof leaked water and AC problems. Were never, have never been properly repaired or corrected, multiple patches and half fixes over the past years. What if we had a catastrophic storm and lost evidence in the police department and had an inability to prosecute a criminal because of a leaking roof? Completed a water study, defining what our true water and sewer rates should be. Found that we were not charged proper sewer rates. Also, we were charging the same basic rate regardless of volume or meter size. We updated to a higher monthly charge for the larger meter basis, making sense, because those meters belong to, uh, businesses, and larger meters will cost more to repair. This study also tells us that we can. Improvement. Completed the sale of a bond to fund the first half of the capital improvement project plan. We sold the bond at one point five seven percent interest. Instead of the expected two point three eight percent interest, I believe, was what we expected to pay. The net effect of this was saving six hundred thousand dollars on the life of the bond, and the lowest rating that the bond agency had sold a bond in memory. The buyer of the bond after Ed and Michael were so impressed with the work that had been done in the last two budgets, that they were not requiring insurance on the bond, which is an added savings. Identified and took corrective action on budget error items. Items were noted year over year and never corrected. I would also note that the previous audit firm stated that they would. I would also note that the previous audit firm stated that they would not any longer do, continue to do our audits. The last year they did the audits, they had to finish the year, filling in final numbers for us, and then the audit, the books on top of that, effectively auditing their own work, which is a huge conflict. And note that this year, that year as well, they turned in the late, books late. We will not be late on the books under our watch, period. The department managers are now included in financial processes and with the budget processes through budget workshops, and also include them with monthly reports to assist them and us. This helps us keep up with corrective action, identifying overages and shortfalls needing attention throughout the year. Finance director, a position left vacant for seven or so years, effectively not having an independent person of a $30 million-plus budget. Who runs a $30 million company without a finance director? This is a person that is charged of correcting audit action items that I noted in number 12. This is also the person that would make sure that you don't buy a $72,000 tractor or a side-by-side without proper documentation of bid and without council approval. Balance the city budget and the city books, requiring financial staff to file books back as far as five years or so to find a balance. Who runs a company this way? The answer is very easy, nobody does. Updating the fixed asset list, including real estate that had not been updated ever. This took the work of day and night of city staff employees. Set up a financial tracking system to ensure the highest level of transparency available, and the same person now cannot send the checks and approve the checks, be it weekly payroll or monthly bill payments. Set up an audit committee to review the yearly audit. They report all findings to full council and discuss corrective action with the full council at the meeting following the report. Finance director found that we had interest-bearing accounts that were not bearing interest, even though this, in this instance, there was no ill will involved. You have to ask yourself, why no finance director was in place? Why would you not want to find and fix issues like this? The finance director found by paying the insurance premium upfront, not paying it quarterly, which had been done for years, this could save you 20% of the premium. The money is sitting in the bank. The net effect of this savings is $25,000 a year. The importance of the finance director should be striking you by this point. Through years of neglect in all the parks, new parks department managers, employees were given the task of starting to bring the care and attention to every park that should have been afforded all along. They've gone above and beyond. They're doing more with less and doing it quicker than in the past, saving man-hours and taxpayer dollars. Reported by the baseball field staff that after, after a recent tournament, the replies by out-of-town guests are the best fields that they've ever played on. People familiar with the ball fields will tell you that they were, the ball fields and the upkeep of them were problematic at best in the past. Realigning key positions at City Hall. The net effect is we have the same production with the savings. Renovating City Hall and Water Billing Office layout and security, which is a recurring item on the audit. Establishing a professional services agreement with Bailey and Brooke, which maintains our social media and city website. Expanding communication with it and education to all citizens as well as area businesses. Bringing us into the current day standards of what must be displayed and also relieve city staff to do their jobs with the city. Bailey and Brooke worked with the Main Street Board, coordinating the downtown activities and even participating in the production of them. They were also a huge help for the emergency team during the COVID-19 pandemic team across the city and hospital. They completed all of this at no additional cost, a huge value added this year. The finance director started utilizing accounting software that had not been getting full. It was sidelined for years, but effectively had been purchased and not fully admitted. It allows for simplification of financial records, keeping full account of financial documents. We were still in 2020 requesting handwritten POs. This software does them electronically. That's just a minor example. The new sports complex, all transactions are now reviewed by an engineer and approved by council based on his information. Once again, the contract for that was signed in August of 2018, and here we are. It's supposed to have already been done and we're finishing up now. That park has been problematic at best. Renovations to the Cortina Cemetery after years of neglect. Dead trees laying across graves and fences falling down on graves. No real knowledge of boundaries. Completing a survey and a brand-new fencing in place to mark boundaries cleaned up, cleaned up to reflect the respect that should be demanded of the grounds where our fathers and mothers and our families are laid to rest. Updated the video system at the City Hall for records to be posted, to be posted for our council meetings and P and Z meetings. This will also place the video where it can be found easily and can be reviewed by all citizens. All of these things that I've listed so far, remember, took place short 12 to 14-month timeframe, and this year we had no new taxes raised. We are at the no new tax rate. We upgraded Christmas lights downtown with a brand-new commercial-grade LED lighting set up and takedown is completed by a company that we hired, allowing for city employees to concentrate on other areas existing Christmas decor can be utilized in parks and civic center, which we haven't done in the past. Ed requested, and we passed two additional paid holidays for city employees. That was at his request. Created job descriptions for all positions. Implemented a new pay scale, making raises fair across the board for all employees. Hired a new building official. His responsibilities are for conducting building plans, structure inspections, reviewing building permits and code enforcement, health services. Hired a new parks director whose jobs include park maintenance, civic center, Main Street, special events, the municipal pool. Hired a police chief who's responsible for all city law enforcement. Renegotiated a solid waste contract with Republic, which also fixes another audit item. Established an AC maintenance contract with local companies that checks the AC units in every building, hopefully catching problems up front so we can help with repair costs. Expand water utilities on the loop like we just, that's for development in the future. Adding major improvements, we did again tonight. It isn't everyone that is calling for Ed to leave. I'm not calling for Ed to leave. The people I talk to daily are not calling on Ed to leave. After reading this laundry list of accomplishments, I fully intend, I fully intend to continue on course. These council seats do not belong to the feudus Grunold or the Facebook complainers. These seats belong to the people of Mount Pleasant. We won these seats by election. We represent the will for how the voters want this city run. The choice of the people to represent them is us, and I'm going to do that. I'm going to represent the people. Ed Thatcher has done a great job, and I have no intention of doing anything but trying to gain every drop of knowledge he has on how to make Mount Pleasant a better city to live and to keep him for as long as he will stay. The level of knowledge and his contacts in the city government realm is staggering. The level of transparency that we have on display in this city today has not been in quite some time. I want to thank Ed Thatcher, and as far as I'm concerned, he's not going anywhere.
On June 19th, we had a dedication service at Oaklawn Park for Ryan Prattman-Johnson, Joe Trailer, and the partners of Softball. Mr. Trailer passed away this week on September the 10th, and he will be funeralized on Saturday, September the 19th at 11:00 a.m. at Unity Church at 1,048 Richardson Road here in Mount Pleasant, and I asked you to keep that family in prayers, and that's one of the things that I did when we put it together. That's why I did not cancel that because of his condition, and I'm grateful for all of you that helped to put it together and, and to make it exist. I wanted him to be able to be here because many times the work is done after you're gone, but, and I'm grateful that he was able to see it. He was sick at the, at the dedication service, he was sick, but, but Mr. Craig is a nephew, and they were able to show it to him afterward, and asked you to keep that family in prayers.
Thank you, Jim.
I want to make a comment. I want to, I want to thank Galen for taking the effort to put that list together of the accomplishments that we have seen and with this council and, and with the, with the leadership of the city, with Ed Thatcher. When we had a chance to interview him, pressed, and I think the other council members were, and if you remember at that time, there was three of this five. We were working shorthanded because of some vacated seats for various reasons, and we had, we were trying to move very quickly. We, when we, when we came upon Ed as our interim, we quickly realized the value that he did bring, and I for one also want to say that I've enjoyed serving in this council, depending on Ed to lead our city in the management position. I still have full faith and confidence in him, and I want to stand behind him in every way, and I appreciate Galen putting at the page and the time to enumerate in a very short time with a very lot of cans being kicked down the road for us to, for us to deal with, and we've, we've stepped up under Ed's leadership and done that to the best of our ability. We're not perfect, I'm certainly not, but I certainly know that we are trying very hard.
Okay, at this time, we're in public comment, and we'll move on to the next item, which is the city manager.
Thank you both for your comments.
I agree with you. The meeting's gone long, so I just have a few minutes. I want to introduce tonight Chief Mark Miller. He's our new chief, he started today, and so we've been expecting him for six weeks and we hear. Want to also recognize Mark Miller, he's back there in the back. He keeps moving and stretching, he wants to, he wants to go home, but he's here to help us, and, and also I wanted to point out that, to have you excuse Chief McCray and, and also Deputy Chief Brad Eubanks, who are out in California, have been asked to go out and help, and that, I guess they're right on the fire line, now right Brett? And, and, or Danny? And Danny, and, and so they're, they're putting 24 on, 24 off, and so they're working pretty hard out there. Also, I want to thank Danny Beard, Deputy Chief, he's helping us out while Chief McCray's gone, and he helped us today, tonight, and his staff, so appreciate them. And, and then I just also want to tell you that, that somebody mentioned the lights, they had mentioned the lights down. We're going to, we are going to have a lighting ceremony. There's a event that I forget the name of, but it's, it's on November the 13th and 14th. That's a Friday, Saturday. What's that, Brandon?
Deck the halls.
Deck the halls. It'll be that weekend, and then there'll be several other events through the Christmas. But on Thursday night, the 12th, we're, we're going to have, the city will, will setting up, and Suzanne Brooke and Mark are getting that program together. They've already talked to Dr. Marshall, Jed Marshall, and, and the band directors, and they're going to get some, some carolers on the one corner and jazz man on another corner, and they'll have several musical things going on for that lighting, and you'll get more information, but save the 12th of November, we'll turn the lights on to introduce the Christmas season. Most cities do it around the 1st of December. Our, our Main Street Board pointed out that they'd like to have it two weeks earlier, maybe even a month earlier, but we did it two weeks earlier, so if people come, they can do some shopping rather than on the first half of it all done. That's all I have tonight.
Ian, are we going to have a Christmas parade, or has that been discussed?
That's, that's the Rotary Club's call, and...
I thought we worked in conjunction with them.
I think they're planning on it, but, but...
You don't know.
Suzie Castillo's the president of Rotary, and, and in the, in our downtown, our Main Street Board meetings, she's mentioned that they are planning on it. We're planning on having a float for you all. Suzanne Brooke and them are, are getting a float designed with, that you guys will ride.
The council.
And I will be driving it, pulling it. No, I won't be, but, but you'll be on a float, and, but anyway, that in mind, but if they decide that they can't do a parade, they'll let us know, but they're working on it.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, Ian.
Okay.
A lot of good things going on.
Yeah. Well, thanks again, and I thank everybody. At this time, the floor is going to be open for more. Madam Secretary, record the vote, and let's get out of here.